Welcome to our visitors and the ones watching on Internet. I would like to call to order the Oak Island Planning Board. If you would, let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic in which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any adjustments? Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Approved. Minutes of February and March. Gene, have you got any?
No.
I do not. Carrie?
None for me either.
Reese?
Hi.
Mark?
No issues.
David?
No, sir.
Can I have a motion to approve February and March's minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Approved. Public comment. Do we have any comment from the visitors?
They all work for us.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh, man. So we're getting good business done today.
Can I have a motion to close public comment? I don't. All right. Okay, old business. Public versus private streets. Matt, can you?
Planning Board. This is a continuation of a discussion that we started last month related to an item from the Council of Governments' recommendations from the audit of the Unified Development Ordinance. One of those recommendations was to evaluate the positives and negatives regarding future street dedication, establish a policy for public versus private streets within future subdivisions, and establish street construction standards to reduce future maintenance liability for any new streets, whether public or private. As you all recall, we had a broad topic discussion last month, and there was some inclination of the board to have some additional technical advice on street standards. It wouldn't make sense, so we've invited our stormwater administrator and our public works director here to field questions for you guys if you have still some of those lingering questions from last month. I'm sure they'll be happy, and we thank them for making themselves available for the meeting today. In addition, we provided some additional technical information regarding streets in the form of a technical manual that was developed by the town last year for submission to NC DOT. So dealing with technical specs for roads, which we thought would be a good reference for you guys and to see what work has already been done towards advancing this goal. In addition, I gave you a link to the National Association of City Transportation Officials, which is commonly called NACTO, their Urban Street Design Guide, which is a good kind of alternative design criteria versus what you typically see in a DOT manual. So something for you guys to consider as well. So that being said, I think we'd probably be best to start off with, you know, any of those lingering discussions or questions that we had from last month. Let Scott and Bryce come up and try to answer some of those to the best of their ability, and then we can continue the conversation from there unless the board feels otherwise.
Very good. Questions?
Yeah, so Matt.
I see on page nine, there was the first month, right? There was supposed to be a town council workshop on rideaway standards. Has that been completed? Is that pending, or where does that stand?
We started that discussion with them a couple of months ago and did have a very productive discussion on exist. So it's kind of broken into two things. It's like the existing street, town streets versus new subdivision streets. So what this board is focused on as a part of this discussion is the new subdivision streets, because that's housed within the UDO, which is the board. But we have started those discussions. They've been productive so far. We've, you know, been working with council on trying to figure out the right path for those, what the existing, you know, town streets, what those standards need to be.
So has any guidance for us come out of that, Matt, that you can share?
No. It was mainly focused on existing streets for the town, which is housed in a separate ordinance outside of the UDO, and what those, what the maintenance of those looks like and what the design of those look like for those public rights of way. But no real feedback on future streets that can pass along at this time.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Matt, maybe you can answer a question. If not, we'll pass it on.
Yeah.
Looking at public and private, when new developments come before the town for approval, road systems, do we have in our specs any sort of guidelines for them to complete the road system if we anticipate picking that up? And what would that be?
So we do have some fairly loose, well, not really loose, but we do have some street design standards in 1061-6 that apply to all streets, whether public or private, that do tag it back to the accepted policies of the state DOT, the Division of Highway subdivision roads, minimum construction standards. So there is something out there currently for both public and private streets. The benefit of having potentially local technical standards for that is we can tailor what we'd like to see on our end. The DOT specs have certainly served a lot of jurisdictions fairly well, but sometimes those minimum construction standards are hard to find or hard to, you know, apply in some instances. So I would say, it would be my recommendation anyway, that we do look at adopting some type of local technical standard similar to the draft that you have in your packet as well for private and public streets.
Okay, that answers that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So every subdivision that comes here, whether it's public or private, could we make, even if it's private, they have to adhere to our standards, the town's standards?
We could, yes, sir. That's right. That's right.
Matt, notice this was May of '24. Was the new tree ordinance put in prior to that or after that?
I believe prior to, yes, sir. I think that was February of 2024 or March.
I know there's a section on trees. I just wanted to make sure.
And that's something, so like I said, this was, and Scott and Bryce can correct me if I'm wrong. I'm glad they're here to correct me if I'm wrong about something. The technical specs that you have were not fully adopted by the, like, planning board and town council. They were a document that was submitted to DOT to assist us with permitting projects. Like, I believe some of the crosswalks were part of the reason this document was created. So in order for us to really apply them to new construction streets, I think it would be wise to, and this is kind of the end of all this, but to allow us one last pass out and make sure that there's not anything like the tree, you know, make sure they're consistent with all our existing ordinances and any technical corrections that our staff would like to make. And then bring back an ordinance reference to that technical manual and have the technical manual officially adopted by the town. So that when a new subdivision comes in, we have a manual in place, hand it to them, say, here's how you need to build your streets and your public facilities in the town and go from there.
Thank you.
So just for clarity, on page 17, 1.07 for tree removal, that is compliant, Matt, with our current Chapter 32 Vegetation Ordinance about removal?
That's something we would want to review internally before we, yeah. My recommendation after this discussion, I'll go ahead and say it, is going to be to allow town staff a couple of months to make sure that everything that's in here is right and that we're comfortable with it being adopted from a technical standpoint. So we can bring it to you, and you'll have that knowledge that, hey, we've checked it, double-checked it, made sure it's compliant with all our current ordinances and regulations, and you guys can adopt it with that knowledge.
So then would, like, right-of-way, you know, some of the things we've been talking about, that impact stormwater that could, you know, those might be in here, but that might be something we want to add or strengthen or what have you based on some of the discussion?
Yes, sir. That's right.
My question is for Scott or Bryce? Been put together since 2024. What, y'all deal with it. What would need to be added or changed, in your opinion, to make it better or make it easier for y'all to use?
For new construction?
New, yes, only talking new construction.
Right, yes, sir.
Well, the adoption of a street standard, of course, but the way they've been built in the past is really not, we don't have binder, our base course is not thick enough. So I think we really need to adopt something that says the thickness of the base course, thickness of binder course, and then at least two layers of inch and a half top coat.
Now, is that in this technical specification?
I don't know. It may be.
Yeah, no, it is not. It needs to be modified. We were going to do some details.
Get up to the mic, so.
It's not. I've already reviewed it. We've got to do some details, standard details showing cross-sections of roads, how we want them, rideaway widths, asphalt pavement depth, structures for all the base, subgrade compaction, proof rolls, you know, things like that. So we do get a good standard road at the end of the day.
And we do need to have some, because there's different types. You've got major thoroughfare, minor thoroughfare, collector's streets, residential streets, and they can all be at different standards because of the traffic load it's on.
Right. So there's a lot of variables.
Water table around here is high, too, so sometimes we have to look at the subbase of that on how we can keep that from affecting the top coat.
So once we get these standards in writing in one place, you would feel comfortable with a development coming in using these standards? And if they wanted to do it private, they could do it private. If they wanted to do it public, it would be good for us? Even if they went public, you'd feel good about longevity and being able to factor in replacement costs and maintenance for the remainder of the?
Yes, oh, absolutely.
I feel comfortable with that.
And the thing about the private, if we don't, if they don't build that at the same standard
Right.
two, three years down the road, 10 years down the road, then they want the town to adopt it, and then we're stuck with a substandard street.
Right. So go ahead and have those in writing before they even build the development?
Correct.
Yeah, and then the only other thing I would add to that is that before accepting them, do a full-blown inspection of the total site, assure everything's built in compliance, you know, prior, you know, before. And if we had staffing at the time during the construction phase to, like, do some primary inspection on what actually is needed, you know, looking at the pavement, structural roll patterns, looking at compaction tests, things like that, checking asphalt temperatures, you know, if we had it, if we had the staff.
During the building process, could we have in their mandated periodical inspections along each phase? Or would that be too argus on the town staff?
It's probably, well, where we are now, I don't think we have, we have, we don't have the staff to do it.
I think we can require them to send, for them to send us their engineering details. The asphalt company should have compaction tests and the mix run and everything. I think we could ask them to submit all of that.
Okay.
Yeah, something from the, and then a sign-off from the geotechnical engineer on site that was doing overseeing a third-party entity
Yeah.
that would do those inspections, if we could not.
Okay.
And that's what we were talking about for the town accepted streets, same thing. We want to do a third party, but we will still, one of the ones we know that are going to be accepted by the town, we will look at the pipe, the runs of pipe, we'll look at all the compaction, we'll be out there for proof rolls, you know, all that, so.
Bryce, Scott, do those kind of documents exist already with paving companies, with construction companies, with the geotech people? So they, so you're not having to create something for them to submit? These are standard documentation that they should have, okay?
I think the most important thing is having in the language that a third party is responsible for doing that and providing the town those documents.
The thing is, like, we spoke at the last planning board meeting. You know, I believe that the town's street design is already there. It, you know, clearly defines collector, shoulder, every type of street type, and then, you know, it's the North Carolina Design Standards. But then for the testing, we don't put that on the town employee or the town expenses. That's done by special inspections by the contractor. So, you know, you've got your base of eight to 10 inches, and then that's compacted. Then you'd have a special inspection required by a company out of Wilmington. They do a compaction test on that. The contractors required to provide that compaction test to the town. Then you've got your asphalt, you know, your core drill that, compact it, proof roll it, all that.
Yeah.
The other thing that you could add is, you could add that the contractor is required to have a North Carolina Highway license. And, you know, that highway license that North Carolina offers determines or pretty much tells you that this guy knows how to build a highway, you know, which is any type of road. I mean, a highway is a lot more than a collector's street or something. But if they have a North Carolina Highway license, then they should be very well educated on how the road should be built.
David, is that the paving company that has that or the contractor that may be doing a?
Typically, the contractor has that license.
Not the paving contractor, but the?
Right.
Whoever the general is?
Right.
Okay.
But you mean the general contractor is going to sub out the roadway, you know, the rough grade of the site is going to be done, and then from there, you're going to build a road on top of it.
But can we require them to have all that as a?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think when it comes to, like, getting the techno, like, some of the third-party inspections done, we can certainly require that the people doing those inspections or, you know, certifying the construction of that have certain technical qualifications in order to accept it, just like we, you know, it's not any different than requiring a survey be stamped and sealed by a licensed surveyor in.
Sometimes when you start putting requirements in things, you step in buckets you don't want to be in. So I didn't know what we couldn't, especially if it's a, if they present it as a private road, and then we're telling them, hey, you got to have this. Is that, are we assuming anything down the road?
I don't think we're necessarily assuming something, but we're, we are setting a standard in place that, you know, we can feel confident that if something does happen down the road, and, you know, let's say that a new subdivision, HOA is going to maintain the road, and the residents all decide to dissolve the HOA, and now there's a kind of a crisis of who's going to maintain those roads. We'll at least have that knowledge that, okay, this, this street, you know, we'll still need to go in and evaluate it at that point, but the street was at least constructed to standards that we feel comfortable with and checked in a way and inspected in a way that the town's comfortable with.
And that's fairly common practice for stuff built inside of municipal.
And in that, in that example that you just gave, just to say on this, does the town have to take those roads?
I wouldn't necessarily recommend that we stipulate in our ordinance that we will take over the roads. Typically, assumption of a right-of-way is a town council decision to assume a private street to take it over as public. So it, you know, when we get into.
It creates a hidden incentive to almost not, and then to break away your HOA and then let everything go to the town.
I do think when we get into writing the ordinance section that will need to be associated with the adoption of this, we stipulate that, you know, the town doesn't necessarily assume, you know, will not necessarily assume responsibility of a private street. It can be requested, but it's not a requirement that the town take it over.
Thank you.
It's like all the testing and everything you were talking about. If they do decide to come from private to public, can we put in there that it's at their expense and not the town's expense?
I think we probably could write that in there. I'm not aware of any reason why we couldn't.
Yeah, because, I mean, you know, if they want us, if they want the town to take over the roads, they should pay for the testing, not us.
Exactly.
Definitely.
I don't think that's totally unusual.
That's normal practice.
You know, if you have any new reinspection or testing that has to be done prior to adoption, because, you know, in my experience, these guys will, you know, we haven't had it happen in this town, but in other places I've worked, the streets department has said, hey, we need, we need proof of this, 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 and this prior to us even, you know, considering taking it over for maintenance and adoption. And so saying that it's at the owner's expense.
Right now in the county, they require special inspections. And then typically at the end of the project, before the fire marshal will sign off on it, he wants proof that the roadway or construction of the dry valves can handle the weight of a fire truck. I mean, in the permit notes in the county, there is, you know, note after note, special inspection required for this. And there's companies in Wilmington that do these special inspections every day, all day long.
Just to advocate for this, I think it's, it's good to give us the strict standards from a staff perspective, but it's also good to give the builder, developer, whoever, you know, if we can point them to a manual that's readily available here at the town that sets everything we want in place, and we can hand that right to them and say, hey, build it this way and you'll be good to go. That's helpful for a developer. What a lot of developers don't want is the ambiguity of how do I have to build this road? Are there standards if I build it one way? Is it not going to be accepted, things like that? So, yeah. Any other?
So if y'all add that, y'all would be happy with this. This would make y'all's job not harder.
I mean, I think it's very common. I think it's something we probably should have had for a long time, so.
Well, I mean, sometimes we, people that don't work with it all the time, put in some stuff that sounds good to us and it makes y'all's job impossible. I'm just trying to, just trying to get an opinion, because y'all, in my opinion, y'all are the experts, you know? So if you say this is unworkable?
I'm sure it, we'll all review it and everything, and we'll all be together on the same page where everything is submitted, so.
Scott and I are the same. I mean, like, we don't like storm drain, the long parallel runs of the pipe being under the road. Because 20 years down the road, you get a failure of all the storm drain, you got to tear the whole road up. We like it outside, so that'll be one of our definite standards that we want to see it not being under. I mean, cross-line pipes, of course, for catch basin, for arterial catch basins, but for the main line, we don't want it under the road. So that's a big thing. But there's a, there's a lot of aspects, I mean ponds, we got access roads to ponds, things like that. We need to just write in this to make us, our lives easier for maintenance or whatever, pond bubblers. We don't want to maintain the bubblers in HOA for the ponds, to aerate the ponds, to keep the algae down. We'll make that note to the HOA. And there's a lot of variables that we've considered here, and I've written a lot of notes. So I think we're both well-versed in what we, what we do, so we'll, we'll get a good manual out. And it makes the life easy on both of us for review.
What would be the benefit to the town to taking over a private road?
At this point, an existing road, nothing.
We would add it to our pile bill list. We would add it to our pile bill list, and so we would get money back from the state.
Off of running your footage of your road.
Yeah, there's a lot of, lot of things, like Pine Forest, I'm seeing pavement slippage, I'm seeing pipes deteriorated, I don't know, you open a catch basin where they grounded the pipe in the box, it's already cracked, all the pieces, they didn't use hydraulic cement or non-shrink route. I mean, you're seeing all these variables already, and that's a new subdivision, I mean.
Well, that's hints for the inspection before we're even thinking about taking it over.
Right, and that's.
And we can require them to bring it back up to standard. That way we're not, not accepting a big repair expense.
At the end.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of times when they bed that pipe going to those boxes, they put a foot of gravel under it. So pretty much under that pipe, you've got water running through a French drain. And then, yes, the hydraulic cement cracks around the box, and then the water from that French drain goes into the box. But what I see a lot of times is that nobody ever goes back and fills the bottom of the box with concrete to the bottom of the pipe. So then the catch basin holds water.
Holds water.
And then you've got mosquitoes just sitting there, no CMs, all that stuff.
Those should always be made with an invert, just turn in the water the way it needs to go with the slope size and everything, so you're not just a square box holding water.
Right.
Most of the time, when I've seen public roads that want to become, or private roads that want to be owned by the town, it's because they got some kind of major repair.
Right.
And afford to do it, so they want somebody else to do it.
Yeah, which is.
Yeah, battered pond, a stormwater pond, something's going on with a stormwater pond.
Then it turns into people trying to keep other people happy. That's what it turns into.
So when you then, so when we update this to include all those things, the idea here is the standard for a private road would be similar, if not identical, to the standard for a state road or a road that we would support. Okay, I'm now thinking of the Pine Forest homeowners, you know, that are saddled with that cost if there is, you know, if they do have to bring things up to standard, and they're going to all sit here and go, we have no idea how that's built, whether it's built to code or not built to code. So I think to the degree that we can put those standards in place that protect homeowners from this kind of a future situation that falls on their shoulders, developers long gone.
Right.
You know, I think that would be the most beneficial thing, other than also us being able to maintain it at a standard that.
If we ever accept it, correct?
Yeah, exactly.
Which, you know, like at the last count, at the last planning board meeting, I don't think the town should ever take over a private road. For stormwater pipe and boxes and stuff, I don't believe there's any license to install such. And there's no inspection on it as well. It's, you know, it could possibly fall under a utility license, but currently it is not in a utility license.
Can you, can, in that case, can you?
I could go out today and start a business and lay out a storm drain along.
Yep.
You then require a developer to put some type of a bond or something like that in place for those types of things?
Not for maintenance.
Not for maintenance?
The state statute's explicit that stormwater.
But isn't maintenance, so can it be tied to the act, how it was constructed to begin with? I mean, if it's poorly constructed, there's maintenance. If it's well-constructed, there's still going to be maintenance, but significantly less.
Well, I mean, you could, you could ask, you know, you could definitely require a performance bond and then a special inspection before that bond is released by a company of the, of the boxes and the pipe system.
That's on the initial, that's on the initial construction of it. Once it's constructed, we have to, if it's constructed to standard, we have to release that bond at that point. We cannot hold it for maintenance of private stormwater facilities in the.
Right. But before it's released, you could request, you could require a special inspection by a third-party company to inspect that system and move forward from there.
So going forward, if we have this in writing, all the specs that you are wanting to put in, you feel good about if some, a community, down the road 30 years from now decides, hey, we want to go public, the roads were established to our standards, we feel that they're going to hold up, and we would feel much better about taking those over? Bingo.
Yeah, absolutely. That's 100%.
So Matt, how long before we can get a document back to us?
Yeah, this is a pretty long document, and as Bryce mentioned, there, there's a, quite a few revisions that we would want to make, as well as checking it against our current ordinance standards. So if you guys would give us maybe a couple of months just to make sure that we've got all our i's dotted and t's crossed on it, then we can bring it back to you guys.
So 10.61 is part of the UDO. Who is the owner of this technical specifications document? Is that Scott and Bryce to make sure this is kept updated and maintained aligned with 10.61?
We would all, all three of us work together, yeah, to make sure that our technical specs are good to go, because it does take input from Development Services, Stormwater, Public Works. It is kind of a document that touches a lot of bases. So typically, you know, the owner of the document would probably be Public Works since they maintain streets. But anytime it needs to be updated or reviewed or anything like that, we would all work on that in concert with the Assistant Town Manager, Andy, who kind of heads up all of us, basically, yeah.
So 10.61, we, the planning board recommends some revisions potentially up to council, right? And then those would cascade down into the technical specifications? And would council also have to review all that detail?
I would recommend that an ordinance and the technical manual be fully adopted, you know, by a town council in the end.
Sure, makes sense.
Yes, ma'am. So that there's no question about what the technical specs are and how they were established. We can, you know, definitively point to they were adopted by the town.
Okay.
And then is, is this going to apply to all street parking lots and so on? Or is this only going to apply to residential neighborhoods? Like if, if a, if a chain business came into town on the mainland side, are we going to require them to follow this in their parking lot design?
No. I would recommend it because there's not going to be a town, town's not going to adopt that parking lot.
Right.
Because that's their standard, they build it, they're going to maintain it.
Okay, which, I mean, you know, most parking lots are still built the NC Design Standards.
Yeah, and this is, this is for new streets. So let's say you're building a new commercial subdivision, you've got, and you want it to be served by a, by a street. If you're constructing that street, then yes, you would have to do this. But if you're just building an individual site, you know, developing one site for one commercial business, that would fall under our parking standards and things like that. So it wouldn't. So it wouldn't necessarily apply, but in some instances, you know, if you're doing a, a large commercial development with streets inside of it, yeah.
What is the value of a, of a mile in the PAL fund?
What?
What is the value of a mile of road in the PAL fund?
I don't know that off the top of my head.
Yeah. But I mean, it makes no sense for the town to ever, to ever take on a private street.
We are not going to make a profit.
Correct. Exactly. So I mean, this, this whole section is to protect residents in the future.
Correct.
On construction design, not for us to control how it's designed and built and then take over that road.
Correct.
We have no intent of taking over a private road.
I strongly disagree. I recommend that.
And everything we're learning into the Pine Forest, you know, you know, because you're living with it now and you can make sure that gets covered here.
Correct. And they've got, there's a lot more development out that way, so it's going to be.
That's right.
You know, we want it, we want it built right. And then that, that, these will be the main roads to get the most traffic or the first one, so, you know, they could do more remediation on that at points and we can, we can make it fall back on damage to, from new development to the old, you know, and then that HOA can go in and mill those roads up, fix them the right way, so.
So may have the changes we'll be contemplating will be related to just adding some stipulations for private streets in 10 dot 61, right?
Yeah, well, what we'll do, what I'll bring back when we finish our review of the technical manual, it is an ordinance and the technical manual for you guys to recommend. The ordinance will focus on making sure that our street standard, our street design and construction stuff and the ordinance points to this technical manual and ensuring that it covers both public and private streets.
This might be a dumb question, but is there any issues with creating non-conformities with any of this in streets, in any of our?
No, because 10 dot 61 does deal with new subdivision standards and regulations, so it would not necessarily create non-conformities. Now, we could definitely, you know, if the town wanted to redevelop a street, you know, now we've got some concrete standards for how we could redevelop that street, but we wouldn't necessarily be beholden to it or like creating a non-conforming situation, ma'am. We could still maintain, you know, as we have been.
Now, something just popped into my head. Please tell me if I'm off base. Private developer builds the roads, something happens, they want, they have to redo the road. Would they have to come back to this standard and build it back to the same standard? Okay.
I would, yeah, I would strongly recommend that.
Okay.
And the only other thing I'd add about that is for the chapter 32 tree, I know I won't get into involved, but in development, when you've got 50-foot lots and you've got a 24-foot driveway and you've got storm drain on one side and you've got all utilities on the other side and you've got about an eight-foot buffer on the setback to put a tree, we require one every 25 feet of road frontage, you know, per road frontage. And those are large canopy trees that are going to be 60-foot canopy. That's something to consider to break that down to a minimum, maybe one per 50, something like that, in, on the frontage. You know, as long as they have the required amount in wetlands areas and things like that, you know, we still require it on the front, even though if they meet the DBH requirement. But that's just something to look at down the line, because that, that system is going to, those roots and all that are going to write into our system. So from a maintenance standpoint, it's a nightmare.
So Bryce, you're suggesting a further revision to chapter 32 related to that?
Yes, ma'am, to subdivision development, yes. In some way, shape or form. More, more trees in green spaces than, and, you know, reduce that or increase that one per 25 linear feet to a larger, larger width, because that's really strenuous on a 50-foot lot, 50 by 100 lot.
So two trees is too much.
Yeah, way too much, yeah. And on the, the new 248 lot, I was like, well, let's, they've got enough trees in there, let's go, let's look at one tree per lot. And at this point, they're still, we're still in preliminary on that, but for landscape plan, but just with all the utilities and structure in there, it would be a lot for maintenance and then repair would be a nightmare. You're going to kill the tree anyway, so it's just kind of like a domino effect.
I see you was doing such a good job, now you just going to open, kick open another can of worms?
No, 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 no. No, but they're, they're in the wetlands, they've got eight acres of wetlands, so.
Oh, I completely agree.
The canopy's there. It's just something that we need to look at for future, future development.
I'm the jerk on the board, so.
Matt, when you, when your team, when you, has finished with making comment, if you, a red line would be super helpful, not because we, I won't be reading it again, this was great reading, by the way, thank you. She put in the notes, you can just skim, you know, if you want to, that's not, but anyway, it would just be helpful to see where staff saw some, some additional things to con, you know, to add, to strengthen, so it would be helpful. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I wouldn't mind redlining, showing what I'd like to add or?
Thank you.
David, I know Matt had said, give them like two months. I would just like to emphasize, I don't want to cut it too short for them. I mean, we got summer coming on, I'd rather give them three months if that's what it really takes. This needs to be gotten right, so.
Yeah, well, taking two, but if you need extra time, to your point, just to make sure you've got everything, I think.
Yeah. I, I think that we'll probably make that our target and if we run it over, we'll give you guys a report that, you know, we're still, we've got a couple other things to work out, you know, something to that effect, that we're, we're still working on it. So I'll be happy to, at the bare minimum, give you guys a progress report in the two months, if not, have something ready to go.
Partly to the, to this comment, are you aware and can you even tell us, are there any permit requests in now for, or, you know, I mean, developments that are in the office now that might make a two or three month almost, you know, really highly necessary because one could be in the, the near future happening?
Well, the most recent 248 lot went over here off 211. I went over and beyond. I'm going to do pipe inspections, I'm going to do compaction tests, I'm proof rolling, I'm doing, I'm doing a full run on this whole, just to kind of do a, a test run. And they're in agreement, they'll have their own geotechnical third party, but as far as staffing and seeing what we can do, it's more or less a trial for trial to see what we can handle.
Well, I was just also trying to, in my mind, to Mark's point, if there's something sort of that we really see on the horizon, then trying to get to it sooner rather than later, just so we are not coming back, but if that, if you're not worried about that, then that's fine.
Nothing large coming down the pipe right now.
Yep, I can, I concur with Mark.
Heard a little bit. Yeah.
Very good.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, everybody, appreciate it.
Thank you.
So all vacations canceled to this.
Vacations canceled this summer.
Something like that.
They're probably already going, what vacation during the summer? You know, it's their busy season.
Okay, on to the next topic. Yes?
Do we need a motion?
No, there's just discussion items, we don't have any action for the board to take in this time.
My apologies.
Supplemental regulations. I would like to start off this session by saying thank you to Kerry and Doyle for sending in their recommendations. Did I miss anyone?
Mr. Brooks.
Gee. Well, I'm sorry, I missed that. Reese, did you? Okay. Thank you, guys. That is very helpful. I think we have a good start on what we want to look at. So with that being said, Matt, let's talk about the ones, the items that we think does not need to be immediately looked at for either technical issues, probability of not needing to discuss, or issues coming up, to knock those off the list first to where we can get to the important issues immediately.
Yeah, thank you for that, Mr. Chair. So as mentioned in the, the staff report that you have in your agenda packet, a lot of the supplemental regulations that we currently have, you know, we, I want to thank everybody for comments as well, because that's really helpful in focusing the discussion. So in my recommendation for how the board should proceed with this discussion, I would recommend that you focus on things that don't have a lot of, you know, statutory regulation or don't run afoul of like down zoning rules for creating non-conformity, because those are kind of long discussion items where we have to work through some of those, those technical issues. So for the purpose of this discussion today, and, you know, this is discussion, we're not, you know, making a recommendation today or anything like that, I think it would, from a workflow perspective, make sense to focus on, on things that we do have clear statutory authority to deal with, so items that we don't currently have in the town, so we're not creating a, a non-conformity in a commercial zoning district, temporary items, you know, food trucks, temporary storage, things like that, just to kind of get some of those low hanging fruit out of the way. And then if we need to circle back to some of the things that, that do have some, some statutory guidance, like cell towers, you know, legal non-conformities in a commercial zoning district, to run afoul of down zoning rules, things like that, we can keep that conversation going. But dealing with kind of the low hanging fruit that we have clear statutory authority to deal with, would certainly make this a productive discussion, but it's the board's discussion, so I'm happy to, you know, hear any feedback you want. We can kind of take it item by item, or if there's certain, you know, items based on, you know, the feedback I've given you today that, that you feel like warrant discussion immediately, then, you know, I'm happy to, to go whatever direction the board's comfortable with.
Matt, just a quick question, this follow-up here. So what you presented us here in the packet, you've made some revisions associated with the comments or, it's not redlined, so we didn't, I thought I read that you had done some revisions to it.
No, we, we haven't revised yet because we had individual comment come in and so the, the board should discuss those comments, you know, if there's a consensus among the majority of the board, hey, we like this, we don't like this, that's when we would go back and, and do a red line draft at that point.
Well, the good thing is what you did, you did do a compiled, so everything is in one, which is nice, because then, you know, we can see everything together and not really, we don't necessarily need names. I would just sort of ask, no one has to answer, you know, it would be great if, if folks are looking at this that's compiled, maybe this covers all your questions, you know, for those who didn't have any comments or anything like that, but it might actually then spark some questions or areas where it might need to be consistent. So for example, one thing that I noticed was just differing hours of operations, you know? I think, okay, we're a community, we're a small sort of family beach town, you know, community, what are those hours of operations, you know, that we should bracket? Now, we can always go smaller than that in certain instances, but, so noise, hours of operations, buffers, you know, things like that, even if they're in an industrial district that isn't, isn't in existence. I think trying to standardize those or trying to make sure that there are boundaries that make sense, like, again, I mentioned this one to you, tattoo parlor can stay up until 2:00 AM, you know what I mean? Okay, maybe that's right, and I'm not saying, but maybe we want to say businesses should have hours of blank to blank, where we don't want, you know, especially if they might abut to or be close enough to residential areas, you know? I'm, I'm just throwing that out there, but maybe we go back, look at this again as a board individually, see if any of these comments sparked further, and maybe what we can do if we add anything, go to the general, the one that you've compiled, and then just add to this list. That might make it easy for Matt when we send him in, and we could also redline our comments like we're asking staff to do. So, and then if we do send any more back to you when we come together, we sort of have that list that, and we can start, look at where things are standard or need to be standardized, you know what I mean?
That makes sense.
So can I have the board's approval to look at putting to the back of the list solar farms, windmills? And is there any other topic that you can think of that needs to be pushed to the bottom?
The satellite.
If I had a recommendation, it would be the wireless communication.
Those three, those three items, let's put on the bottom, burner.
Last time I revised statutes or ordinances for that in another jurisdiction, that section alone was like six months and an attorney review to even get the, so my whole point is, in my recommendation, is try to expedite some of the things that we can go ahead and decide on, you know, and then if we need to revisit some of the long discussion stuff, we, we can take that up.
Those three, good. Anyone think of anything else that may not be a top priority right now? Okay, let's take this section, one section at a time, start with 7.3, cemeteries. Does anyone have any additional comments as far as other supplemental regulations? I think everything's good on my part on this. Mark? So we're good on 7.3, Kerry?
Yes.
Okay. 7 for childcare center. I know we had some comments come through on this.
Right.
Fence and the buffers, special, when should a special use permit be required? Additional elements to include noise buffers, fence and protection, hours of operation, maximum number of children, and yard needs to be fenced. So what I'm seeing is a consistent fenced yard, fenced facility.
And, and I would assume, again, children in mass like this, just the, the safety issues that you would want to safeguard against, I would imagine that those, are those sort of covered by regulations at the state level for what they can have? Okay, that was my thinking.
Those are already covered by state on how many can be in one location and number of qualified supervisors to cover.
I was even thinking more like types of playground equipment and things like that that would meet safety standards. Those are all done at a, at a state level. Okay, that's what I want to make sure was covered.
I'm fortunate to have a lot of experience with that recently. I said, I'm fortunate to have a lot of experience with that recently, having a five-year-old, so, yes, those are all closely monitored by the state.
See, also, you've got, like, the company I work for writes insurance on daycares, so we come in and inspect playground equipment and, because if it's outdated, they can have outdated equipment, but them trying to get insurance on outdated equipment is, because it goes into the door locks and CO2 monitoring and all that other stuff. Now, one question I had, and I got the same question, whether it's a childcare center or a family care home, almost in conflict to what Daryl said earlier. Why do we want to limit hours of operation? I mean, everything, everything you hear, there's a childcare shortage, daycare shortage. And just like the next one.
I'm not saying limit it. I'm saying, is there a consistency? So to me, I would agree, 6:00 PM seems early, but I wouldn't want it going until 2:00 AM. You know what I mean? If there's a?
Yeah, but there's people that work.
Second, third shift.
Seventh shift, third shift, weekends.
Maybe.
Because, I mean, we.
My sensitivity to hours of operation, which may not be relevant, okay, I admit that, is if you're near residential areas, the amount of noise that can happen that may create a noise near a residential area, that's my only concern is, look, I live on the beach, I have beside two rentals, at 2:00 in the morning, they're setting off fire alarms, they've got music going, I'm just saying, you know, where there are resident, and these are adults. And, but I'm just saying, where there are approximate residential, you know, developments, being sensitive to hours of operation because of the noise that it can generate and traffic and all that, so that's, go ahead.
Yeah, but I mean, that was, you know, when you start putting limits on things, because, okay, so no family childcare home can have a, have any kids on Saturday and Sunday. That's, it violates the regulation, correct?
The current regulations in this place, yes, sir.
So, I mean, we're, why should we be limiting it? I mean, it's, they should be able to do it whenever they want to do it. And I understand the noise and stuff like that.
If the need's there, I feel it should, because that puts hardship on the people that actually have the kids or need for the service. I mean, that's what the service is there for, because working families have such a hard time finding childcare, that if you limit from, say, 7:00 to 6:00, and they work 5:00 to 7:00, or they work 3:00 to 11:00, you automatically cut their service out.
And, and business is going to, a lot of the daycares that I look at in Raleigh, Durham and everything, they are Monday through Friday, they are 7:00 to 6:00, because they know that's where they're going to make their money.
Yeah.
But now a family childcare home, they might charge triple if you drop in, drop it off on Saturday and Sunday, you know? So it might be feasible for them to do it. And I don't even know how many we have.
What, what is the difference?
Not aware of one that we have.
Without looking at the definition, what is the difference in these two?
And what district are these locations?
A family care is like for older.
Family care home is, a family childcare home is typically what you would consider a, a home, home daycare where someone. a, a home, a home daycare, where someone lives in the residence and provides childcare services, uh, as a part of it. Those are regulated and permitted by the state as well as, just like a large one, uh, would be, um, let me pull up my table of uses.
But they're all allowed in, in majority of the residential districts, though, right, Matt?
I believe so, yes, ma'am.
I think that's the reason for the days and the times, is because they are allowed in, in our residential districts on the island.
And I'm okay even, another thought is flexing the time, because I, I hear that need, and I, I, you know?
I agree with that.
But maybe at a certain time, there are some other stand, you know, around noise or what have you that go into effect or something like that.
We have noise ordinance now.
Yeah, that noise ordinance is, it's, to me, excessive. Uh, I mean, it's, it's too lax right now. Um, again, just think of eight kids or six kids or whatever outside screaming, and I'm just saying, you know, we're, our number one sort of resident is a retiree.
Well, and there again, on the island, uh, Matt, you said we don't actually have any.
Don't have any.
Because it's.
Don't have any family childcare?
It's cost prohibitive with the value of the property to actually run a facility.
Yeah. In a childcare s- center, they're usually a commercial business.
Yeah, it's gonna be on a commercial side.
It's more or less a mini school with classrooms and the playgrounds in the back, soft surface fenced and all that stuff.
There are people on the island that keep your kids.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
There sure are.
Because they're just not, they're just not deeming it themselves this.
It's not set up like this.
Yeah, because if it's, if it's under a number of kids, you don't have to have a license.
Right.
That's right. Look, the other thing I think to, to keep in mind, and we're talking about it, is, you know, for young families that we do want to come here and live here, this is a service that they need, whether it's taking care of an elderly parent or whether it's, you know, a child, you know? I do think it's something, and, and I am open to extended hours, I just think being aware of the issues.
Seven to 11:00?
Seven to 11:00 PM?
Mm-hmm.
We're talking about the family childcare home?
Yeah.
Um, I, 11:00 seems maybe too late, but if that's what we need, and I don't know, so I'm a little out of school. Yeah, yeah, you're trying to find that, that sweet spot. I would just say after a certain hour, you know, if there's noise or, or what have you, and I understand we have a noise ordinance, um, I still think we've got to address that or the town council needs to address that one differently, but maybe there's some extra provisions that you can add.
If I may, um, we had a rather extensive discussion, um, during the last round of supplemental regulations at town council related to hours of operations, um, and, uh, their feedback was, uh, to, uh, get our, uh, economic development manager in to discuss the business side of hours of operations, to kind of help with this, uh, particular conversation of what are, what are businesses doing now versus what would we like to see and what, you know, what kind of feedback we can get from that? So, you know, hearing this, this back and forth discussion, uh, I would, you know, just step in and offer that. I'm, I'm sure she'd be happy to come in and, and talk to us about what type of hours of operations we, we see on the island right now for some of our businesses to kind of give you guys a, you know, just another viewpoint and perspective to, to add to the discussion, because it sounds like we've, we've got a little bit of a, you know?
Yeah.
Philosophical conflict here.
You know, what you was talking about earlier about standardizing, they might, she might say, or they might say.
Or deciding what's right, you know what I mean?
Right, right.
So could we just for placeholder on seven dot four dot one, say that there will be a, a line for hours of operation at some, you know, what those are, are to be determined? On seven dot four dot two, strike a family childcare home may have no more than eight children, because isn't that stipulated by the state? Why is that even there?
Yeah, our, our ordinance construction is a little, a little strange, so typically, uh, we have basically an extra allowance in our ordinance, so you have to forgive me if I'm wrong, I haven't looked at these for a while, but I, I think the, the state requirement for a home-based childcare is six or less, and so with this family childcare home, we, we have a little bit of a greater allowance on the number of kids, because we do have two listings in the table for, uh, a childcare home and a family care home, so it, it's a little, a little strange. Um, we, we could pay, we could simplify and pay it back to, you know, just the, the state licensing number, you know, something like that, so that we're not, we're not burdened with the task of determining what the appropriate amount of kids is when tied to the state licensing.
I thought we talked about that on the prior planning board as far as licensing and whatnot. Let's not get between, the town not get between the state and the provider, right?
Yeah, the lady who is petitioning to have actually a daycare.
Right, so, so we should, should we, could we agree to strike seven dot four dot two dot one?
Yeah, I think that, that's fine, or, uh, you know, reference it to the.
Yeah, reference back.
Just reference the state license requirement, yeah, yeah.
And then by just.
And I would think you would have that same thing in the childcare center itself. Wouldn't you have that same reference there as well?
Yep.
Good.
And then I had suggested 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM for seven dot four dot two dot two for the hours of operation, but again, pending feedback from whatever, that we could have a placeholder there for what hours end up being, right?
Yeah.
Not 7:00 to 6:00, but something else.
Something reasonable.
Yeah.
I would, I would love to see the flexibility of the petitioner or the, or whoever the business is, if they can get a permit or something to extend the hours, so that there's something that there, there are some standards of operation that is sensitive to the, if it's again, a, close enough to a residential area. And by the way, if these are going to spring up, to me, the, I would think they're going to spring up off the island part of Oak Island, because you're not going to have a beach home with those property values, you know, doing something like that. You're going to have, and all of that area that it would be most likely to go in, or one where your families are located to, it's where all your residents are, you know? So again, I, I would love to see us be able to flex if it warrants it, and if the provider of the facility, the service can meet standards around noise or something like that.
I can look into potential ordinance constructions that would, would do something similar, but we, we might be treading into, you know, having something allowed by special use and having something allowed by permitted use, you know, where you have to make some of those discriminatory, or not discriminatory, but discretionary, uh, you know? Is it too close to a neighboring property or something like that? Sometimes that falls into it, but I'll be happy to look into if there's ordinance constructions that can give us some flexibility there.
Okay.
I could say, uh, my, my childcare closes at 6:00, and I have to drive from here to Leland to make it happen, so.
Yeah, yeah, no, I get it.
Sometimes that's tight.
Yeah, no.
But don't they have also, just randomly, they, most of those childcare centers, you can stay beyond 6:00, but they charge you a lot of money if you do that. So they really stay open.
It's a dollar a minute.
A dollar a minute.
A dollar a minute, yeah, it's, it's absurd.
Oh, wow.
Oh, wow. I thought you stayed pat, yes, ma'am, you're 100% right.
Okay.
Under seven point four point two, well, seven point four dot two dot four pretty much eliminates family childcare home on the island, because you can't be within 500 feet of another residence.
Yeah.
That, that's within. Located closer than 500 feet to any other building housing another.
For another.
Family childcare home or childcare center, not necessarily a residence.
Other residence.
Can we take out the and that? End of that?
Yeah.
Yeah, honestly with you, I don't know why.
Just limiting competition.
Yeah, I don't know why we necessarily care. I mean, granted, it could be double the noise if it is closer to a resident. I would see the buffer being around a residential area, you know, or something like that, versus the buffer being between two like facilities.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, um, and this, you know, kind of goes between the, the muddy waters of, uh, state and local regulation. The, the state says that you can have a separation requirement between childcare, uh, childcare homes.
Two like businesses, yeah.
Some jurisdictions don't even have a local standard for separation between those two, but you are allowed to separate those, those two uses. As far as how 500 feet came about and is that the right amount, I, I don't know, without doing some more research. I, I can look into what other jurisdictions do and come back and see.
So the question then would be, because these can be in a residential.
Oh, yes, yes, sir.
Area. To me, is it reasonable then to put the buffer between this and residence? I know that becomes a little hard, because if a family si-, I mean, if a home sits in the middle of the neighborhood and they want to open up a daycare, I'm just sitting here going to the neighbors around it, you know, those kids are going to be outside playing, screaming, having fun, which is great, you know, it's the music of summer, but to some people, that's not, you know what I mean? That they buy their home with that not being there, and then suddenly that springs up. So I'm just sitting here thinking, is it fair to have that buffer imposed again?
Yeah. That'd be very difficult to do with the size of lots on the island.
I think, I think we did all agree, though, that fencing and buffers should be defined for both of these.
Fencing, I can totally.
Yeah.
Get behind.
And Matt, do you have any suggestions as to that? How to, how to incorporate fencing and appropriate buffers in this?
For the family childcare home, um, so it's important to remember, we're thinking about two things. Childcare center is like a commercial, fully commercial operation versus a childcare home, which is, you know, someone's residence that they also raise kids in. Um, I, I, I think I'd lean more towards, uh, if you wanted to standardize a buffer for the childcare center, um, if you did want to, so here's the trick, it's kind of getting to, uh, Mr. Gilbert's point, um, these are all permitted in single-family homes that have happened, and we permit single-family homes everywhere, um, at least in all the residential districts. Um, so, uh, an additional buffer requirement, um, you know, could be installed, but it, it would be tricky, because, uh, you know, it, it is still primarily a single-family residence that happens to, I mean, it's basically like a home occupation almost, where it happens to have children in there. If you did establish a buffer requirement for family childcare homes, I'd probably make it the, the smallest one we have, like the, the class A one buffer, which is, is pretty minimal. Um, but, but I certainly take everyone's point, and that, that's also why it does, you know, at the state and the local level, limit the number of children, I would assume, to kind of try to limit some of the impact of, uh, you know, the number of kids that are just out there. I have, you know, my kid can be playing in the yard by himself, causing a ruckus, so I can imagine what six or eight would end up playing, for sure.
In a perfect world, um, I guess square footage of the facility might then dictate the maximum number of children?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
So that, so that's, that's at least one bit of a safeguard, is that a smaller home, you know, that, that's built, isn't going to have 15 kids running around because they can't accommodate that many, so that, that might also be, if, if we know what that is or if we're comfortable with that, that might be something to help with the issue I seem to be having here.
So buffers, class A, or they're vegetation related, right, Matt?
Yes, sir, sorry, yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
And then as far as fencing, I think we all agree that fencing for safety reasons is important to add to all this for childcare facilities, right?
Yeah, they, the fencing is, the fencing for, uh, even a home daycare facility is covered by the, the state permitting requirements, they, they have plenty of.
Are they transparent, semi-transparent, do you know?
Uh, I believe the only requirement is, is for safety, so it would be chain link, it wouldn't necessarily require.
Because I was hoping that the fence could then be a, an additional buffer, noise buffer, you know what I mean? But it may not be, okay.
Okay, we good with this? So moving on to.
Wait, hold on, just one second, Matt, I'm sorry. So Matt, are you, are you good on what we've suggested here?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, docks, piers, bulkheads, living shorelines. Anyone have any further comments?
Looks like that's covered by camera rays.
That's covered by camera. Uh, seven point six, granny pods, temporary healthcare structures. Any comments on any further?
I'll just step in and say, I, I wouldn't recommend we adopt any additional rules, because the state statutes do dictate when we have to permit these temporary healthcare structures and not, and so if we adopt a higher regulation that people can't meet, we could potentially be in trouble with, you know, conflict with the state statute that says that you, you have to permit it in residential districts if they meet these requirements. If we add extra requirements locally, uh, then, then we'd be in some jeopardy there.
Are they exempt from setbacks, though? Because that was the only question I think here.
They shouldn't.
Is there no, are there setback exceptions, I think was the question, based on?
Because this would be similar to an accelerated, uh, an AD.
ADU, yeah.
Yeah, there, there are some, uh, setback requirements that are set in the state statute that, that do exempt from, from local locational requirements for ti-, for accessory structures. Uh, if I recall correctly, I'd have to do a little bit more research on this.
Matt, I think I pointed to you, um, there is some legislation in Raleigh about ADUs and accessory dwelling that will waive setbacks.
Yeah.
In towns, just FYI.
Jesus.
Yeah, right?
Yeah, yes, ma'am.
Did I get that right when I read it?
You're right, yes, ma'am.
Be aware that.
Opened up a can of worms many places, yeah.
It's coming, it's coming, so, okay, so for no setback specifications required here outside of what the state already specifies.
That's right.
All right, okay.
Uh, satellite dish antennas, I haven't seen one of those in forever.
I know.
Well, I think, doesn't, um, oh, gosh, DirecTV still do them?
It's attached to the house.
Right.
It's still a dish, though, right?
Yeah.
A thing.
But it's attached to the actual.
But, but it's, uh, so, um, shall not exceed 24 inches. I was hoping that new TVs, they weren't even that big, we could lower that, uh, and it says if possible, they should not be located in the front yard, so I guess that's fine. Or if possible, they must, they shall not be located in a front yard and shall be hidden. The shall be hidden was the part, I like that, but in some cases, you don't have a choice where it goes, because of the way the satellite and where, where they're going to put on your house, so it might not be hidden. So I wondered if the shall be hidden was too restrictive, or if that, you know?
Yeah, I mean.
If it fell still under the if possible, but the shall be seemed a lot stronger than the if possible related to the, they not be placed in the front yard.
Yeah, so the, what we would, so how staff would look at that is if someone, you know, did have to install a satellite dish antenna and they, uh, you know, ran into a situation like you're describing, where the, the provider is like, it has to go right here, there's no other way for it to operate, we would take that, that justification and say, okay, it can't be hidden from public view, or it can't be in the backyard in order to, to operate as intended. Um, and so that's when we would look at the, the if possible, says, if we, if you can't do it, you know, if you can do it, then we want, you have to do it, but if you have justification from the provider as to why you can't do it.
So to clarify, we could just say, if possible, satellite dishes shall not be located in the front yard and should be hidden, or something like that, or shall not, and hidden from view of the public right of way. If possible, it should be hidden.
Yeah.
But not shall be, because I think that's a different standard.
I think what I'm hearing Matt say, though, is the citizen has relief possible already.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
With the way it's currently written. So why do we want to, why do we want to open up?
Well, shall be is a, a stronger statement than the first if possible.
True, but he's already said that they will make an exception for it, given proper circumstances, right, Matt?
That's right.
So it's not, this is not restrictive for the, for the cu-, for the citizen, I don't think. But the only question to, to Daryl's point is, what about commercial? Because these, my question was, these stipulations.
Take out the word shall, and it works. I'm, I'm sorry, we're editing the document anyway, I just feel like shall, I mean, anyway, go ahead.
Well, I think that we, I think we even, when we went through the table of uses, Matt, I think we had, the prior planning board had some detailed discussions about this already, and it, this shall be came from the prior planning board as part of the table of uses review, if I recall, David Wright. So I don't.
We're, we're talking English, I'm not sure I'm changing the, I'm, I'm truly just talking, I'm not trying to change the standard, I'm just trying to make it a little bit.
But I would think.
Look, I'm fine. I don't have a satellite dish, so I, why should I?
If we changed it to should, there's really no way to require them.
Right, that's right.
If, if possible relates to both, if possible, if it relates to both, which is what I'm hearing it is, then the only, then the easy fix is just take out shall. Right now, if possible, do this and it shall be hidden from view. It's two different standards, and I'm saying they're really the same. It, if at all possible, they should not be in the front yard and it should be hidden. That's what we're saying.
But I think should, to, to Mark's point, gives people more flexibility.
I'm saying just strike shall, I'm not replacing it with should. I said just strike shall and it works. Because if possible relates to both things now.
Yeah, the if possible relates to both things.
But with the word shall in it, if possible, does not relate to the second part of the sentence. That's all I'm saying.
We're getting down the hole.
Guys, words matter here. We're talking about an actual definition of something and clarity for a reader. So let's not be like, you know, throw the words out the window. I'm just trying to make it make sense and so, anyway.
Should where shall is?
I'm saying strike shall and it still works because it's still, now it all relates back to the if possible. If you want to put should in, that's fine, but I feel like it still works because the if possible relates to both of those.
Matt, what can you, what's protective for you? Staff has to administer this, so what do you need? That's the question.
Yeah, I, I think the, I would, from a grammar perspective, I hate to go down this road because I definitely was not a grammar person. When, when I read this sentence, the, even the way it's constructed now, the if possible applies to the entire sentence after that comma. So the shall being there twice, to me, does not separate the if possible. But if you do strike the shall, as Mr. Gilbert recommended, then there's still the first shall in there, and so it's still.
In English, for it to work that way, you would need to remove the comma. Just being honest.
That's right, that's right.
We're going, you do what you need to do. I mean, you know the point. I mean, if it works, it works. I don't care. I didn't mean to, for one word to create this kind of a discussion.
On this topic.
I agree. We could strike the shall if that's agreeable.
Can I have a motion from the board to strike the word shall?
So moved.
Second, all in favor. All right, strike the word shall. Thank you.
Now, back to, but back to the other discussion on this item regarding commercial versus residential. Matt, is there anything that we should do here? Because I know like restaurants, they all have TVs now. I'm sure they all have direct TV. They probably have those dishes somewhere. Is there anything necessary for commercial versus residential within these satellite dish texts?
We, we've not run into any issue with someone wanting to install a commercial satellite meeting the, the size requirements that we have in here currently.
They can comply here without any problem.
To my knowledge, I, I haven't run into somebody having a problem with, with meeting these standards.
Put them on the roof and they're behind a parapet wall.
Yeah.
And I think dishes are literally months, months away from being completely obsolete.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay.
Good.
Solar generating, roof mounted. Do you, anyone have any issues with this so far?
I thought we.
Oh, we're skipping, we're skipping that, I'm sorry. 7.1, 111, swimming pools. Okay, we've got a list here.
Now, swimming pools is a defined and regulated by the North Carolina Health. And they have a short book on regulations of pools.
Does it cover the location and things like, like the setback or those kinds of things?
Not location or setback, but depths, slip materials, size of apron around it, depending on whether, based off of the depth, or if it's considered a waiting pool, or an ADA pool, or a public pool. There, there's a North Carolina general statute of rules on commercial swimming pools.
We had a whole list of things here. So Chairman, do we just need to zip through these?
Just zip down 7.1, 11.1. Is additional setback based on depth? Assume larger sizes deeper pool. So setbacks for larger pools.
Is that, I think that was my question. Is that, is that why the greater setbacks? Because it's a bigger pool? Is that, is that the logic?
That is what we were told when we were built, when we were putting in our pool, is the depth changes the setback.
The depth does change the setback. As far as why the depth changes the setback, I, I don't have any technical justification for, for that on, on my end unless there's something in the.
More room to run, to jump in.
Yeah. Potentially.
Because you could have a four-foot solid 16 by 16 pool with the same setback as.
On the island, on the island, is there a, a depth limit? Like, can you have a 10-foot pool?
If it, I mean, you can.
I mean, 10 feet deep, I mean.
Yeah, you can have a 10-foot deep pool.
But you would need a bigger setback.
Yes.
Yeah, you would need an additional setback.
And maybe that's part of the disincentive to putting in these big deep that also can have more drowning, you know, issues and things like that. So it might be tied to a safety.
So I just, the reason I highlighted it, because I just wondered if it made sense from a practical standpoint. That, that's what, that was the reason for my question.
Reason why is to disencourage deeper pools.
Uh, that's the only reason I can think of. I, I don't have a technical or reasoning reason as to why you wouldn't, you know, necessarily have a bigger setback just because your pool is deeper than five feet.
Now, can I jump into can of worms here a minute?
Sure, it's y'all's discussion.
I remember, I don't remember who it was who brought it up, but they questioned this, the last comment. Swimming pools are not allowed in the required front yard area. How many people come to you?
So we, we, we see mostly pools in the front yard area or requests for pools in the front yard area. Typically in the, like, first, second row, probably mainly second row.
Second row more than first, yeah.
Who want the house setback some, or, or have a house that's already setback some and would like to install a pool and maybe their house is, was designed and built in a way that the pools, there, there's no rear yard to even put a pool in. That's where we see it the most. So it, it is, I would say we maybe get one or two requests or questions about it a year probably. So it doesn't come up a whole lot, but it has come up since I've been here, yeah.
Do we have any appetite about rethinking that? I don't own a pool and I can't put a pool in my yard. But I just remember, I can't remember, it might have been Melanie that said people would come to her and ask her about it.
I think it's mainly second row and then, you know, is, you know, the, the owner views them as either having two front yards or, you know, it's that front yard, backyard.
It's a through lot issue, right?
Yeah.
It's a through lot.
Yeah. Is that right, Matt? That's where it would come up probably?
Yeah, it would, it would definitely come up there in the.
Well, where you have a pool in the quote unquote beach side of the second row, because of the way they're constructed, most are above ground, I guess it can be. But that means your driveway's got to be on the other side. So I guess in that instance, they're viewing the other side as the front of the house. That's what I think, do you know what I mean? That's the, where they're getting it on the beach side.
Yeah, I, I don't see a problem with a pool on either side on through lots. I mean, it's.
Well, man, I don't, I don't either, but I just.
Too long or where they want to put the pool.
Evidently, somebody did it one time because they put it in here. So I didn't know, you know, I wasn't here the first time y'all went through this. I didn't know if it became, if it was an issue or, or what, I don't know.
And you, you could, you could dig down into like zoning specific regulations. So like the, the first few rows are the R7 zoning districts where we see a lot of these through lots and a lot, and we do get questions about people. So if you wanted to just say, you know, in, in a certain zoning district, you know, a pool in the required front yard or something like that could be allowed.
Would that be the simpler approach to solve the wordsmith?
I think it would tailor what you're trying to do to the place you're trying to do it versus, you know, if you, I think you open up more of a can of worms if you were to just say, you know, a residential pool shall be allowed in the front yard. Then you get on yacht drive and wooded section and things like that. So I would, if, if you guys wanted to go down that route, it, it might be worth tailoring the language kind of narrowly to, to not expand it townwide, but you know.
Wouldn't it be difficult though, right, with stormwater, driveways, setbacks? To be diff, be, be difficult to put a pool in a front yard? I mean, let's think about that rationally. I think, I think it doesn't work from just a lot coverage perspective.
No, I mean, if you put a pool in the front yard, then everything just gets moved around to the backyard.
But that's only possible in through lots though.
Yeah.
Right, right.
So if this is gen, if this is generic for all lots, we can't.
Yeah, it could only be for double frontage or, or through lots.
Yeah, so if you did, I mean, that's what I'm kind of pointing you guys towards it. You, you could write it, you know, specific to through lots or specific to a certain zoning district or, or something like that if you wanted to make a greater allowance. And if you did, I, I would recommend you do that because if the, you know, a pool, especially in a residential setting, is an accessory structure and you start running into questions about, well, where can other accessory structures go on the lot? And we, we've heard the, the towns worked through before I even got here, you know, questions about, you know, having an accessory building in the front yard kind of thing, so.
I think if, if this, we should focus this discussion in our, our consideration on risky issues. I don't see that as a risky issue for the town unless I'm missing something, right? But now I do want to go back to the one foot, for each foot over five foot of pool depth. Do we really need that to my original question?
You may need to look at the state code on pools on that.
I'll, I'll be happy to get with.
Can you check on that, Matt? Okay. That would be helpful, thank you.
Chair, you're saying while we're working on this section, not to add or consider putting pools in front yards on through lots?
Not today.
Okay.
Well, it depends. I mean, how many requests do you get? How much does this come up in the development community?
The, the make it all the way to me is usually, you know, a couple of times a year maybe at the most. But I, I'm sure you guys being in the community, especially, you know, dealing with building, real estate, stuff like that, you, you might hear it a little bit more from clients than.
David, what do you hear from a building?
I think it'd be nice to allow pools on the front side, you know, they're in a pool looking at the ocean.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, you know, and you, we can literally just say, on through lots, pools are allowed in front yard to follow all of their setbacks. Just means they may have to push their house back 10 feet to put the pool in the front, but they still require to follow setbacks.
Option. And I know we've had people that, I mean, like I mentioned earlier, have had an existing house that was built.
Far enough back.
Far back, and so they, they didn't really even have a rear yard because just the placement of the house as it was constructed was not to the front setback. It was maybe pushed really close to the rear setback, so.
So fencing on a pool is what, four, four feet, six feet, four feet? So, so theoretically, you could have a house with a four-foot solid vinyl fence along the fronts on the street side. So when you drive by, that's all you're going to see is a white.
They're typically not solid.
But they have that option though. They can do the solid vinyl.
They could.
I think, I think aesthetically, when we talked about some of this before, it's like, what do you want the island to look like, right? As you drive down the street, do you want just to see a big wall and, you know, on the street fringe side? Because you have to have that for a pool.
Yeah, you could, you could stay in there that it has to be a, it cannot be a solid fence. I mean, Reese, what do you hear?
If a through lot on a corner, you can't have a pool front or back because the front setback and the rear setback are the same.
That's right.
You just can't have a pool for whatever reason, I don't know. Right now, that's the way it is. Can you explain that, Matt?
As far as the reasoning behind why our ordinance is constructed the way it is, not particularly, it was a preference set up when the UDO was constructed one way or another. We, we've tried to kind of, a couple of times since I've been, actually deal with some of these issues related to through lots. You know, once was a outside applicant and one staff actually, you know, proposed a, a text amendment to deal with some of the situations we talked about. And in the end, they weren't adopted by town council and that, that might be what Ms. McCullough is kind of getting at is we, we've, we've tried to thread this needle about, you know, development regulations on through lots a couple of times. And the feedback we heard when we got to town council was the aesthetic feedback of, you know, having a wall of fencing or a wall of pools or something like that. It doesn't mean we can't try again, you know, in part of this recommendation and just making the board aware of kind of, you know, the discussions I've heard and, and been a part of in the previous efforts.
If you made the requirement in that case on the fencing that it must be a transparent fence, does that do with part of that? The other thing I was going to say was Reese, I'm pretty certain on West Beach, probably somewhere around 27, 30, there's a corner house with the pool in the, on the dolphin side of the house, not the beach drive side, but the dolphin side of the house. It's a relatively new house and it is on that corner lot. So I didn't know if maybe something has changed.
This is a through lot on dolphin and pelican.
It's on beach drive and dolphin.
Dolphin and pelican through lot.
If, that's what it is, you're saying?
Yes.
Okay.
But other than that circumstance, what other situations have come up?
Yes, the front can be either way, but it doesn't matter. You pick the front.
Yeah, you pick your front or back.
You still have the same setback regardless of what you pick.
But you're saying a, a corner lot on dolphin, in between dolphin and pelican can have a pool in the front or back?
Neither. You can have neither front or back because the setback is the same 20, 25 feet, front and back.
So you can't have a pool because there's not room?
Right, there's, you can't meet the setback with the house sitting, with the house meeting the setbacks, that leaves no room for a pool either front or back of a house.
But, but that's up to, that's, the town may be requiring those setbacks, but the owner of the lot, if he would compromise and build a smaller house, he could have a pool.
Or have part of the pool underneath the house.
Smaller pool, he could have a, he could have a bigger house. So that's, you know, the, the town is allowing it. The owner of the lot or whoever's building the house is choosing not to have one by putting a bigger house.
Case, this is the third owner of the house.
Yeah.
But they didn't have a choice.
Yeah.
Right.
And didn't, I guess, didn't investigate the setbacks before they bought the house. And of course, the other option was put pool under the house.
Yeah.
Which, don't want to do that.
As it relates to the same setback topic, I would feel better if under sectional, a 711-1, we just added something to the, you know, beachfront homes. Setbacks for beachfronts homes shall be determined by, is it camera or whoever does that? Because it's not necessarily the same as an accessory dwelling unit. I know pools can be an accessory dwelling unit, but it's not, you know, and they can go all the way back to the static vegetation line be built. I mean, there are homes where their pools are built almost on the beach, you know what I mean?
But I, I think we could reference for beachfront lots, camera regulations.
And the other question is hot tubs. Because I know on the beach, again, I don't mean to live in that world, I just want to make sure it's represented. Hot tubs fall under that same limitation as to where you can put it based on your static vegetation line. We don't really cover hot tubs in here and they can, you know, they can be, you know, decent size.
With, with a hot tub, what, what it's going to depend on is, is it, is it a permanent fixture? So if it's a.
You can't even put an, it's my understanding, you can't put an above-ground hot tub within a certain distance of your static vegetation line. And in some cases, those run underneath the house. And so that's why there's that one house on beach drive, on East Beach Drive, where they put the hot tub upstairs on the second floor, on the, on the street side because they couldn't put it on the back.
Well, yeah, what, what I'm, what I'm trying to, to get across here, because you, you said hot tubs are, are not mentioned in here. Which, the way our ordinance is written, if it's permanently affixed and it has a certain depth of water in it and it's used recreationally, then it's a pool.
Got it.
So if it's not permanently affixed, like a, you know, you see these hot tubs, you can get a hot tub delivered from Amazon, you know what I mean? We wouldn't count that as a structure. So you would still have to meet camera regulations, but we don't list it out specifically in here because it's, it's not actually a permanent structure on the lot.
So if, if a pool is built on the decking, which seems to be really popular now, is that considered a permanent, that one is?
The decking, it, it's affixed to the deck, which is, the deck is permanent, yes, sir. But it's that, it's that affixing it to something that is permanent or the, the structure itself being permanent that kicks it into the swimming pool category.
Here to actually state what you just said, and that is, you know, hot tubs shall be deemed a swimming pool in, if it meets a certain standard, because I wouldn't.
We can clarify it in here if you want to. And I just point it back to the definition that we have in our ordinance for.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, I didn't have the definitions with me to cross-reference that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, if you don't feel like it's needed, that's fine.
It's defining pools as three feet or more in depth. So it's actually.
That's in the definition.
Swimming pools of three feet or more in depth.
Our hot tub.
I can, I can clarify it and make sure it's all consistent and, and clear for everyone, yes, sir. Happy to do that.
So, so back to our issues, right? The other thing, I mean, if we're going to add something about pools being required or allowed in the front yard, there should be some language associated with that, right? Whatever that looks like, Matt, from, from you guys, specific to through lots, maybe should add. I think everybody was in agreement with that, right? Specific to through lots, maybe should add. I think everybody was in agreement with that, right? And then if that's the case, yeah, then if that's the case, seven dot one, 11 dot two, then we should specify, you know, front yard pools with fencing must have.
Yeah.
Open fencing.
And you want to limit the height because we limit the height of a fence in the, the front yard anyway. So you, you don't want a six foot fence in the, the front yard generally.
Does it, that it's transparent?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. And typically a pool safety fence does have to have transparency. That's a building code requirement. So that you can, in event of a, a drowning or something like that, you're not behind, you know, if somebody's in the pool and they're, they're in trouble, people can see that through the fence instead of having an opaque, um, requirement there.
I don't think it's required that it's transparent. Anyway, on the, also under locking mechanism here, a gate of equal height with a locking mechanism. So if it's a six foot fence, I thought the locking mechanism had to be, the gate had to be a minimum of four. I, I mean, this one, it seems as though if you built a six foot fence, a gate of equal height, the gate would have to be six feet. And I didn't think that was the case. I thought the gate had to be four feet.
I think you're right. Yes, sir. That's a building code. Uh, I, I'll dive into the building code safety regulations that Mr. Pershaw was bringing up. Yeah, he, he just held up a four.
A four and then the lock is on top.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
And then in specific situations, you also had to have an alarm.
Yeah.
On the gate.
That's right. We've had a couple of those.
What situations are those?
Um, so if your fence is coming off of your home and from under your home, you have a egress door from your house to that pool area, then that house door lock is at 36, 37 inches. So when that door is open, there has to be an alarm on that door that opens. Now they're, you know, they can be battery powered or they can be direct power, but you know, it's just a loud screeching sound that they emit.
Basically so a little kid doesn't wander into the, the fence.
Door is open. If somebody's there, then they're alerted.
And so seven dot 11 dot three fencing types, I thought it was interesting, chain link fences listed. I was told I couldn't have a chain link fence around my pool.
Yep.
That I had to buy a whole more expensive one.
We didn't ask about it, but we were told the very specific type and chain link was not in that type that was allowed.
Yeah, that's something that we'll dive into as a part of the, the building code, because it sounds like there's probably some conflict with the building code safety regulations for fencing and our local zoning regulations.
Because certainly they can be climbed.
Yeah. And also you can't, also you can't have open pickets. It's my understanding going this way.
Correct.
They have to be closed picket if they're going horizontally. Um, they can be open picket if it's going vertically.
And next one. And it says 16 square inches. That's four inch by four inch. A kid can't get through that.
Wait.
Oh, okay. I see.
The open fence between each section of fence shall be no larger than.
Four high, four wide.
Yeah, 16 square inches.
Square inches.
Makes sense. Um, lighting, I think that was an issue that we raised. Size, brightness and placement.
Yeah.
Other than just all floodlights.
Yeah, I think, um, in, in thinking about that and looking at this ordinance, um, we talked a lot about when we did the last supplemental regulation review about dark sky lighting, that might be a standard to adopt here, you know? Just a, as you mentioned, to kind of broaden it beyond just the, the flood lighting issue.
The dark sky lighting.
It'd be simple to plug that into here. I don't think that would be an issue.
Just plug that into this.
Dark sky compliance.
Yeah.
And, and dark sky covers the lumens and the brightness and all that. All that's covered.
Yes, ma'am. That's right.
That's easy.
Can we request no radios after six o'clock?
Just want us getting good.
Yeah.
Maybe seven.
Is that it for pools? Yes, Lisa.
Move on to the next section. We have some, um, citizens who thought the meeting started at 10:30 because apparently that's out.
Oh.
Um, but they had public comments they wanted to make.
Yes, that would be great.
I wanted to mention that to you before they got further along.
Who, uh, would like to make some comments? So give us your name and address.
I apologize. I, I thought that the meeting started at 10:30.
You're fine.
So I'm, I'm, I'm sorry about that. Um, I'm here to talk about, it's, I'm speaking as a resident.
Your name and address.
And my name is Heidi Largent and I reside at 4100 Marsh Grove Lane. And that's at the Preserve Condominium Community on the mainland side, uh, just right next to the Barbie Bridge. Thank you for the opportunity to bring to your attention the unique blended community of the Preserve with Liberty Senior Living. The Preserve Condominium Community was developed by Intercoastal Maritime Associates with a clubhouse and three buildings, offering 134 high-rise condominium units along the ICW beginning in 2006. The last building was completed in 2009. In November of 2022, the remaining 31 acres were sold to Liberty Senior Living to create a 55 plus senior community with 50 single family cottages and 12 apartments. The Liberty Site Plan was approved by the Town of Oak Island in 2023. And I'm not here as a representative of Liberty. I'm just talking about our blended community. The Preserve Condominium Community has one private road called Marsh Grove Lane that connects to Howie Franklin Road and Long Beach Road. It is our understanding that the new development DOT road requirements under consideration today do not apply to our private road. And my question is, is this correct? And then thank you, uh, for your time and consideration in this matter. And if you'd consider grandfathering our private road, we'd be so grateful. Thank you.
I have handouts. I'm Sue Davidson and I'm also a member or a resident of the Preserve. I live in 3209. And just to kind of make a, a, a little addendum to what Heidi said. When I was reading the preliminary road, um, information, it looked like new developments would have requirements for DOT, um, road structure. And what we're saying is that the original Preserve from 2006, road system should be grandfathered in, even if Liberty builds right next to us and is considered a new development. So, um, that's the clarification. Now my handout here is what I call the mystery road. I have spent four years trying to figure out who owns what, where, and who's responsible for the road and the maintenance. This road, um, as you can see at the top is Vanessa Road. It, across from Vanessa Road, it curves in where the airport, um, one of the airport entrances is and the golf cart shop. The Preserve and Liberty is a combined effort, just purchased 50 feet of this road from the airport authority. So my impression then is it will be a private road. The next teensy bit from, um, the new purchase to Marsh Grove Lane, I'm under the impression that's a private road, but I've gotten a lot of mixed answers when I've called DOT, when I've talked to the, um, folks here and when I've talked to our board. The other thing is that I've been told that the little circular part at the bottom that goes under the bridge is a part of some type of easement or authority. And I've gotten all kinds of, you know, is it, um, a coastal authority, a bridge authority, a railroad authority? I don't know. What I do know is this road is very dangerous and it's being used by folks, not just from the Preserve or who are accessing the airport, but the whole community over at South Harbor. And they are turning off of, um, Old Bridge Road, doing that blind curve, which is not up to any standards. It's very narrow. You can't see. We actually had a fire truck go off the road there, um, about a year and a half ago. So it's not suitable for emergency egress. So I want to bring this road to your attention. Um, you know, it's a community road. I don't know who owns it, but it's very, very dangerous and I think needs to have some type of research into, um, who's responsible for what. And, you know, my, if I ran the world, I would have it be a town road. So again, I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you for your comments. Uh, thanks for coming and presenting your views. And we will look into this and see what we can find out for you.
I believe Matt could probably talk to this, but in 2023, when we approved that, I believe the airport was responsible currently for that road. And then there was some agreement with the developer to purchase the road and to maintain it as a private street. I think one of you guys commented that. I think that was our understanding as a board, that it's, it is a private street. It will be owned privately by the developer of that new community and the Preserve. So I guess my thought would be to direct those questions to that development group. Is that right, Matt?
Yeah. And, um, for the, the comments about the, the new road standards we talked about today versus their existing private street is, you know, uh, as we talked about in our morning discussion, the, the standards that we're looking at are for new street construction. So existing roads, um, you know, what, we, we're not going to make you go back and retrofit your existing road uh, to the, to the standards that were considered adopted as for new street construction. So.
GIS states that Oak Island Property Holdings LLC owns that road.
The whole thing, even the curves?
Uh, from the curve to the left, that road should be on, that section is the DOT or, you know, it's a, it's a highway. So it's a state's land. Likely they gave whoever developed that road a easement under that bridge to make the curve on around to Old Bridge Road.
That's technically state land.
Yeah.
But it's narrow and it's dangerous.
Right.
So that would be the state DOT.
Well, yeah, they probably gave the developer, uh, an easement to build that road through there. And then when it connects to Old Bridge Road, I believe that's a state road also.
Very good. We are 15 minutes out.
Yes, so Mr. Chairman, are we going to do a hard stop at?
Let's do.
Okay, just.
One more and do a hard stop at 11.
That's perfect. We, we got, you, you know, for those of you that have been through this last time, you know, we take our time, work through everything. So.
Uh, so next is temporary storage.
Mr. Chairman, do you want me just to try to recap what I understood on the swimming pools, just because there were so many?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. So, um, generally, um, add some hot tubs clarification. As to seven, 11 dot one, Matt, bring back some comments to us on the each foot over five feet depth thing, whether the state regulates that or what, whether we need that. Um, also add specifications for through lots and front yard pools. Add some, um, text regarding, um, beachfront properties and pools regarding the static vegetation line limits, et cetera. On seven, 11 dot two, um, reference to the, um, front yard pools on through lots, uh, need to add some stipulation on the fencing regarding, uh, a front yard through lot.
Clarify the locking mechanism.
Yes.
I mean, the height of that.
Yeah, four foot limit. Right. And then on seven, 11 dot three, um, Matt, you were going to check on whether the chain link fence is, is allowed, right? It is stated here. Um, and then seven, 11 dot five, add dark sky compliance on lighting. Did I miss? Was there anything else?
Sounds good.
Is that it? Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
I'll bring the NC pool code, code, uh, stuff next time also.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, next up, seven point 12, temporary storage facility, portable storage units. And we are down.
I'll start with the first one.
Will you start?
The, the first one is mine, seven, 12, three.
Yeah.
120 days just seemed excessive. Um, like, so, so this would be a residence. For example, someone could put a pod or something like that in their front for basically three months, four months. Again, I, I thought that was sort of excessive. It, it, so it's a couple of things. One, it's a big structure and some, with the 15 foot setback on the beach for some of those homes, it does block views and I do think it creates a hazard. And also if you're, a pod is sort of bring on, fill up and then move off. Maybe there are other types that are meant to be more permanent in nature, but that would be my first comment on that one. And then the second one was, how are we okay that it then decreases the parking requirements that are meant to be in place for residences? Cause it's going to take one or two big parking spots. Go ahead.
That's temporary storage. Is, is that dumpster or temporary storage?
It says portable storage unit.
Portable storage unit. I, I assume that these were portable. I, I know what your comment is on dumpster. Um, but yeah, I was thinking it was a storage unit, not dumpster.
I totally support Mr. Gilbert's comments on that. I think I shared that comment as well, that it should be reduced to 60 days and no more.
I would say 30 days.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I would agree.
I mean, if you're, if you're moving and you need a pod.
Move it, unpack it.
I guess some people would start packing, you know, three or four months ahead of time, but most people. Most people, they were moving, this is the house, we're going to be out of this house this, this day, and we're going to be in this new house this day. And, you know, the pod, nobody wants to keep it no longer than they, they like to.
What's the difference between dot two and dot three? Temporary storage intended to be a place greater than 30 days requires a permit.
Yeah. So under 30 days, you, you're not required to get a zoning permit. So the allowance is up to 120 days. If you're only going to have it for 30 days, we don't require a zoning permit. If you're going to have it over 30 days, but less than 120, you have to come in and, and get a permit for it in order to be established. So. Yeah, so.
So the permitted period is what we're really addressing here.
Seven dot 12 dot three is ba- basically setting the maximum time limit. And seven dot 12 dot two is establishing the time you can have it without having to come in and get a permit.
So should we then just increase dot three to an additional 30 days? So 30 days without a permit, you can get additional 30 days with a permit for maximum 60.
Yeah.
I like that. I'm, I'm not a contractor. When Hurricane Ayesha's came across the west end, how long did those people have to put their stuff in storage and sit it there? Well, I mean, you're, you're thinking about people moving in.
I know, but I didn't see any pods during that time.
But there could be a need for it. So, so what's the rules under a state of emergency?
Yeah, that's right.
On pods and so forth?
Yeah, seven dot 12 dot one covers dumpsters and temporary storage facilities incident onto a natural disaster that are exempt from these regulations. So if your house is damaged and you, you're getting a temporary storage facility to put your stuff in, while that repair is being taken place, this would exempt it from the time requirement, which, you know, when we, when I first started looking at this, I, I also thought that 120 days seemed like a long time. Um, but I thought maybe it was related to, you know, if you're having, if there's a natural disaster, but that seven dot 12 dot one would seem to exempt situations of a natural disaster from even these time limitations. So if, and I've, uh, been in North Carolina my whole life and it seems like a lot of bad hurricanes have followed me around. And I know that there's times when it takes, you know, months or years to, to get back, uh, into a house. So I do think that, you know, exempting those while, while it is, you know, it's going to be kind of open ended, but it, you know, sometimes it takes that long really to.
And state emergencies may not last as long as a resident needs something there, because then contractors get backed up, subs get backed up and everything takes longer and longer and longer to get to.
I mean, there's people that still don't have their house from Florence and Fran- I mean Florence and Matthew.
Yeah.
And that was four years ago.
I was in, uh, I lived, grew up in Tarboro and we were pretty much wiped out during Floyd. And it was years in some instances before people could get back into some of their places.
Were you thinking 120 days?
On this time limit, 120 days is max outside of a natural disaster.
I like the idea of, of, you know, you can apply, but I, I still don't know why.
Yeah, 30 days and then apply for 30 days.
Yeah. And then apply for an additional 30 days if you need it. If it's under, um, if it's due to, you know, damage, natural disaster, what have you, you can have an extended, but you would do it through a permit process and then you, you would be able to say, yeah, this is what your damage was. would be able to say, yeah, this is what your damage was, and then you could do an extended permit through that. But to me, thirty days is ample, sixty days being the max.
Yeah, for, for outside of a natural disaster, yeah.
Close that one twenty to sixty.
Thirty. It's an additional, oh, no, maximum sixty, you're right.
Maximum sixty.
Thirty without a permit, additional thirty with a permit.
Thirty, sixty with, and sixty max.
I would still go back to say, in the event of a, a natural disaster.
But it says incidental.
It says that already.
We're already covered in dot one, incidental to a natural disaster.
Oh, I was just making sure that, okay, got it.
All right.
Was there other stuff here, let's see?
One, two point five. We don't want them to put them in a driveway?
Well, it says seven, dot five says no temporary storage facility may encroach into vehicular use areas, which reduces the amount of parking below the minimum perimeters.
I mean, don't people put them in the driveway?
That's the only place you can put them.
But, but the state's going to take away creating minimum parking, so we might as well go ahead and say they can put them there.
Well, I would, I would leave it, and then if the state takes it away, we can certainly, you know, say, take it away, but I, I just wanted to say, I mean, look, in a lot of cases, you know, you're required to have four parking spaces, but it's a husband and wife, so if it doesn't encroach on the minimum of the occupancy or the intended use, now, if it's a rental property, you need every bit of that, you know.
Yeah, but if, if they put it in not on the parking service, then you're killing vegetation.
I'm just going to tell you, there's nowhere to put it if you don't put it in a driveway.
Exactly.
Yeah, and I think the intent of seven dot twelve dot five is to make sure that the minimum requirements of the facility are still met, even if you do put it in a driveway or in a parking area. So let's say you have a house that is only required to have five parking spaces, but you installed six, and you're only required to have a, a twelve-foot driveway, but you put in a twenty-four-foot driveway. As long as the minimums are maintained, then you're, then you're good. So like, if, if you took up that extra parking space with your pod, you still have, you were required to have five, you still have five, you're taking up that extra space with your pod, then you're still okay.
So when they came in to permit it for the additional thirty days, then town staff would verify that they're not.
That's right.
And then if they are, you're just not going to give them the permit and the, and it has to go.
That's right.
So hang on. So if you've got, if a couple lives in a four-bedroom home, they're required to have four, well, let me ta, ta, say that differently. If they live in a, a home that has four inhabitable rooms, okay? We are a couple, and we have seven, because they count my office, they count an exercise room, and they count a sitting room when you come up to the stop and step. So I'm required to have seven parking spaces for my wife and me. Okay? We only have four bedrooms, but there would be no way, and in most of those beach homes, the driveways are already finagled in a way to meet that requirement for a five, six, seven, however many they have. Under this, if it's a, if the intended use as a residence, there are just two of us, we can easily fit two cars and still have a pod, we could not have a pod in this case because we're required to have seven, and this would take up one or two of those seven, even though we don't use them or need them, it would still not, because the example somebody just used was you're required to have five, but you have six. That, I don't know that they're, now, maybe in certain lots where you've got long driveways, you've got, you know, Pelican Dolphin, that sort of area, I'm just.
But required parking spaces doesn't have to be on pervious or impervious surface.
Correct.
Sometimes on preliminary site plans, parking spaces are shown over in the grass yard area.
Yes, sir, that's right.
Correct, but I'm just saying, though, in, in those cases, you can't, you could not have a pod, even in an instance where the intended use is a residence and you don't need the maximum number that's deemed by the town.
I'll, I'll say this carefully. You could have it for thirty days because we're not going to know.
That was the out I was hoping you were going to say, is you can do it, and then when you extended it, for example, you can look at the intended use of the property to make sure that that's also just, okay, that's what I was hoping you were going to say, because that's not.
We've got that cleared up now. Good. Final thought. We are five minutes out. Does anyone else have any comments on temporary storage?
No, sir.
Very good. The next is wind energy, we're dropping. Let's go to U Business, which is none. West End Report, and we will pick up on cemeteries on the next meeting.
I'm sorry, I just said that was cheer, that was cheerful.
That is right. Next meeting, we'll start with death, okay? Yes, we will start with death. Heal from there, come on now. Gene, any?
Let's just leave them alone and give them the respect that they need.
Any comments?
Uh, no, sir.
I, I will say, I've, I've actually had a few people respond, that the sand project that's going on in the West End seems to be going well, and people are very happy that the amount of sand apparently is going to increase.
Able to get more than we thought.
Pretty significant, yeah, exactly, which was a wonderful thing. And then I've also had several people comment, I guess we're doing a seafood festival this year on Oak Island, and, and the comment was, they think those festivals are a great item for the town, not just for tourists, and they hope we can do more like that. So they were really, so having a new one like that, you know, after the summer, end of summer and all that was great. So kudos to staff or whoever's organizing that and helping with that.
Carrie?
Oh, update on the steering committee developments on the, and Matt, you, you can hit this in more detail, certainly, but as a participant, just by way of update, mission goals have been established, all this in draft form, setting some action items around how this is, will all be executed. There'll be a master draft, I think, Matt, he said to, through the planning board, it'll, a draft will come to us for review, I believe, was understood, and then subsequently to town council for final approval. That's an August, September kind of timeframe, in case anybody was wondering. And then I think adoption, Matt, was estimated for sometime September-ish.
September, October, yes, ma'am.
To, to complete the new land use plan. I think there'll be another public session.
There is another public session at the ninety percent draft phase, where they'll roll out the ninety percent draft and, and take additional feedback. You know, something I've tried to, you know, say that as we do these reviews, this is always draft, until it's adopted, this is all draft material. So, you know, anybody who comes to a public session or has feedback or looks at the materials and has, you know, let it fly, because we need to hear from the community and what they want in order to make sure that we end up with, with a, a good guiding document for the, the next few years, so, absolutely.
And I think, as a member of that steering committee, I think it's been exciting to see the public interest in these public sessions, and how many people have turned out to be involved and, and to learn more about the process and how it works and give input. So, and that input has been very valued, so we appreciate the public participation.
Reese, good. Mark?
Nothing.
David?
No, sir.
With that, I would like to turn it over to Matt for a staff report.
Yeah, very brief staff report. Thank you, Carrie, for mentioning the comprehensive land use plan. We had a fifty percent update in town council as well just last week, so anybody who's interested in seeing some of what they've been working on very diligently, please check out the recording of the council meeting. But the, we're kind of into the nitty-gritty work now of taking a deep dive into the future land use map and, you know, setting those intentional action items going forward, which is, you know, where you get into kind of the, the whats and the hows after we've set goals and objectives, so making good progress on that. And I thought the, the fifty percent draft presentation went really well. We do, we are keeping track, and I know some of the board members are keeping track of the, the happenings in the state legislature. We are in a long session now, and there's plenty of bills that have been filed that would have an impact on, you know, how local governments do planning and development regulations, so we're keeping tabs on that. The North Carolina chapter of the American Planning Association has bi-weekly legislative update calls, so we hop on and get an update on where all those bills stand, but there's quite a few, and if it looks like some are coming to completion, we'll definitely keep you guys in the loop on, on how it would affect us going forward. And then my last update, you might have noticed some, some newcomers here on the front row. Happy to introduce you guys to Taylor Davis, who is our new planning manager. So she's going to be heading up the, the daily operation of the planning and zoning departments to take that off of my plate a little bit, since I'm moving into the, you know, department head role for all of development services. You'll likely be seeing a lot more of her as she starts picking up some of these, you know, policy changes and development approvals and things like that. We also have Justice Herman here, who's our new planner one. As y'all know, Courtney Milliron left a, a couple of months ago to take a job with the Division of Coastal Management, so we've backfilled that position with a planner, and our intention is to have more than one staff member who's trained and updated on flood, KAMA, and all development regulations. So having that cross-training and that, that, that support within the department will really hopefully help out citizens who have questions about that. You know, if somebody comes in, we're not, if the KAMA LPO happens to be out in the field or out sick, you know, we've got a, a backup person to, to help fill in for that position. So really excited to have them here.
Do we know if Courtney's been assigned back to us, or is it another, has that been determined?
I haven't heard it officially, but I have heard that it's likely that Courtney's going to be our, our person.
Good for you guys.
Which is great, because she knows the island so well. They both come to us from the UNCW Masters of Public Administration program, so really excited, and they've got backgrounds in both Pender County and Carolina Beach in, in planning departments, so really, really excited to have that capacity built up in the department. We're really growing the planning side to, to be able to do more for our citizens, so it's an exciting time for everybody. That's all I had for staff report, other than, apparently, some, some other happenings in the town.
I have one thing to say if I can, if you don't mind.
Yes.
I would like to introduce Erin Baker, and she is our new deputy clerk, and she'll be working with Debbie in HR as well, and you'll be seeing her at planning board meetings as well.
Welcome, guys.
Welcome, all staff.
Glad to have you.
Who can assist you?
No, I don't want to.
Don't want to sit beside me?
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Turn. Thank you, guys. Nice to meet you, everyone.
Glad to have you.